I understand completely what all you offer, the different buildings and the students within our corporation.
Sure. So, my name is Lisa Willet Skidley. I'm the Chief Revenue Officer for ForC Health.
I'm Krista Capp. I'm the Director of School and Community-Based Services for ForC Health in Rochester.
So, we are a certified community behavioral health clinic. That is, one of our offices, obviously, is here in Rochester. But we work really hard to meet the mental health needs of our students, of our school corporations. We've had a partnership with Rochester Schools for a long time, and it's been a really great partnership. But we have multiple providers that are in all school buildings. They work with students. Any student that the school has identified needs that support and that service. We work one-on-one with the students. We work in the classroom. If we need to work with them outside of the classroom, we go into homes, we work with parents. But we're really focused on the success of the student, right? So, a lot of times, if somebody has a mental health condition, it can really interfere with their academic success. So, we work really hard to address any issues with attention or coping with any symptoms related to a mood disorder. And so, we work with not only the student, but also school personnel to just help make sure that that student stays engaged and remains successful in their academics while working on their mental health conditions. And like I said, also ensuring that we're coordinating with the parents, helping them when they're in the home, so that we can make sure that it's really just like a full treatment team aspect.
Any questions? Thank you so much for the services you provide.
Thank you for the partnership.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on to the consent items. We have six different sets of minutes. We have the approval of minutes from December 16th, regular board meeting. The approval of minutes from January 6th, public hearing. Approval of the minutes for January 6th, the organizational meeting. Approval of the minutes from January 6th, the finance meeting. And then the approval of the minutes from January 6th, the regular meeting. And then the approval of minutes from January 6th for the study session. Does anybody have any corrections, comments, questions, thoughts on any of those?
No.
Is anyone opposed to approving these together as a group?
No objection.
Good then. Does the public have any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Ethan. All in favor, raise your hand. Four zero. Next, we'll move on to the financial report. Shad, do you want to walk us through the funds report, please?
Sure. In our education fund for ending December 31st, our receipts totaled $1,995,053.27. And of those receipts, $619,815.2 was the revenue that we were required to transfer from our textbook rental fund to the education fund for the IC code 20-40-22-10. And our year-to-date receipts are $13,633,840.78. Month-to-date expenses were $1,463,595.64, leaving our appropriation balance negative $980,524.93. And our year-to-date expenditures were $14,446,86.84, with our actual cash balance of $623,782.56. The debt service fund, in December, we did pay debts. So, that one looks a little different than it does most months. We had receipts of $1,409,438.48 due to our property tax distribution received in December. Our year-to-date receipts have been $3,495,421.39. Our month-to-date expenses were $1,697,927.38, leaving our appropriation balance negative $158,738.13. And our year-to-date expenditures of $3,406,15.13, leaving our cash balance of $1,559,884.71. Our operations fund, receipts were $1,409,242.66. We did not do any transfer in just due to some cash flow. We wanted to make sure all of our funds were in the black to end the year with. Our year-to-date receipts were $4,849,728. Month-to-date expenses, $320,601.61, leaving appropriation balance of $644,74.76. And year-to-date expenditures, $4,453,486.24, leaving us a cash balance of $431,88.8.
Any questions on the financial report? Fund report, I guess. Okay. And under the financial report, we also have our approval of the claims totaling $3,431,691.38. And the approval of payrolls totaling $1,67,340.71.
See, I'm a little bit tricked up on those numbers sometimes.
It's a little different. Any questions or comments on the payroll or the claims? Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments on the funds report, the claims, or the payroll? Firing now, I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mark.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stephen. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved, four zero. Action items. We have the approval of an overnight student trip for Rochester High School baseball. And this would be to Jeffersonville High School on April 5th, returning on April 6th. Did everybody get a chance to read through that? Any questions or thoughts?
Can we just vote on one, two, three, since they're all overnight trips?
I think so. Lauren, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, the second overnight trip that we have is an overnight student trip for IHSAA girls state finals.
So, for full disclosure, this trip has already happened. We, at the time, weren't sure if we would have girls traveling to the IHSAA state finals. So, I went ahead and approved the girls being able to spend the night. They were very successful at that tournament. Wanted to make sure that they had that opportunity, but also wanted to be transparent with the board in that that happened.
Any questions or comments on that? And the third overnight trip would be for IHSAA state wrestling tournament. This will be on February 20th. Return date is February 23rd. Everybody get a chance to read through that? Questions or thoughts?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Have we gotten to, I'm sorry, have we gotten to the wrestling one yet?
Yes, both girls and boys.
Okay, the wrestling one, when I read through it this afternoon, it looked like it needed to be updated. There were some dates there about Tristan's 19 years of being a head coach and a few other things that looked like he'd kind of, you know, marred the sheet from somebody else, but it didn't all get corrected.
Oh, I see, number five. Well. Is that, I think that was, that's all.
Is that on the February 1st?
Yeah, number five.
On page.
Is that it?
On page two.
Yeah.
He would have like two years of experience.
I say something. No.
We'll take it back, and we have, we'll have the study session and the board meeting when we have items that we can bring it back in, if that's all right.
Yep.
We continue to bring it back then.
Katie, did you hear that?
No, what?
Jana's gonna go ahead and take it back and have him edit those and do corrections, and then bring it back to us at our next study session with the regular meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good catch. Okay, any other thoughts or questions, comments from the public? Firing now, I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept the overnight, approve the overnight student trips for the baseball team and the girls wrestling.
Seconded by Mark, seconded by Ethan. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, four zero.
You will need to act on the third trip. A motion is tabled.
We'll make the motion to table item three, the boys state wrestling, pending appropriate changes on dot.
Okay. Motion by Stephen, seconded by Mark. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes, four zero. And number four will be our third and final reading of the policies. As you can see, the list is on the board. This will be the third time that we have discussed these policies. The majority of them were technical changes. Changed the word is to was and thens and these.
Shall's.
Shall's and might's and may's and stuff like that. So, any question on the myriad of policies that we looked at this last time? By the board? Thoughts, comments, questions? Good with it? Don't want to read through the list?
No. Have at it if you want.
Firing now, I'll accept a motion to approve. Policies as.
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, moved by Mark, seconded by Stephen. There's no other comments. Everybody raise your hand. Motion approved. Motion carries, four zero. All right, let's move on to donations. Sheet. Don month donated. This would be for the January 2025 donations. We have Columbia Elementary, amount was unknown for hats and gloves for students. This was the Women's Circle of Grace Church. Riddle Elementary, $100 donated to help with food service accounts by an anonymous donor. We have RMS $500 donation for the school art program from Julie Sutton. RHS $100 from the, for the athletic department from Summers Insurance. RHS $500 donation for the art club for Rochester High School by Julie Sutton. And RHS $1,300 for the art club for Rochester High School by Rapid View in honor of Matt Sutton, who retired from there. That was sweet. RCSC, for $1,000 distinguished alumni lapel pins, Everwise Federal Credit Union. RCSC Athletics, unknown. Custom-made golf ball markers for girls and boys golf teams by Ken Jackson.
I'd like to add that Ken is actually here by video. And his sister, who was the first female golfer to make the boys' golf team, is in the audience, Karen Callahan. But Oscar can attest that the markers are pretty nice eye candy for the kids. And I know, I know the coaches are real excited. I don't know where the, I don't know where the golfers are at on that, but I'm sure they are very appreciative. Ken has been following the girls' golf in particular this fall, so. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Those are really sharp.
They are.
And thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah.
That does really mean. Thank you, everybody, for the donations. I know it's definitely something that makes you feel blessed every time you read this report. Were there any questions or comments on the donations report?
I know it says unknown on those ball markers, but Mark and I and AD Stone decided they're priceless. Mark's gonna enjoy the spring when he can get out there and set that down on the green in front of all his buddies.
I will say, Ken and I were on the golf team together, class of '72.
Well, that's great. I'll take a motion to approve the donations report.
I'll move again.
Seconded by Mark, seconded by Stephen. There's no other comments. Raise your hand. To approve. Motion approved, four zero. Guess I should say that in a different way, shouldn't I? It's kind of a no-brainer. Personnel report. Recommendations, Riddle Elementary. Robin Kidder, Instructional Assistant, hourly rate $14. Maintenance Department, Dustin Ingram, Building Tech within the department, hourly rate $14. Zach Martin, Building Tech within the department, hourly rate $14.75. RMS Athletics, RMS Track and Field Coaches, Isaac Shaver, Head Coach, stipend $14.88. Peyton Hyatt, Assistant Coach, stipend $11.40. $1,140. Brian McCants, Assistant Coach, stipend $1,140. RMS Athletic Resignation, Troy Pryor resigned from RMS Track and Field Head Coach effective January 8th, 2025. RHS Athletic Recommendations for the 2025 Spring Season. Spring Track 2025, Ryan Helt, Head Coach, stipend $4,500. Troy Pryor, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. Kenneth Hughes, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. John Walkman, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. Ryan Schaefer, Volunteer. Alicia Walkman, Volunteer. Carmen Reeves, Volunteer. Alex Guterman, Volunteer. Megan Nyle, Volunteer. And Jim Arnett, Volunteer. James Arnett, Volunteer. And Harrison Korkos, Volunteer. Spring Baseball 2025, Corey Good, Head Coach, stipend $4,500. Jeff Himes, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. TJ Smith, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. Brent Easterday, Assistant Coach, stipend $2,100. And the remaining are volunteers. We have Todd Beeler, Dave Ballyou, Jacob Good, Brian Hokum, and Josh Van Meter. All volunteers for the spring baseball. Spring Softball 2025, Jim Coleman, Head Coach, stipend $4,500. David Musselman, JV Coach, stipend $2,100. David Duncan, Rachel Anyer, Billy Medina, and Jason Coleman, all volunteers for spring softball 2025. Spring Boys Golf 2025, Mason Heidi, Head Coach, stipend $2,970. And Chad Scobie, Assistant Coach, stipend $1,170. Spring Girls Tennis 2025, Adrianne Pollack, Head Coach. I totally almost read that the way it was written. Stipend $2,970. Marcus Smiley, Assistant Coach, stipend $1,170. Lola Brady, Volunteer. FM La, Kelly Howard, from December 30th, 2024 to approximately March 31st of 2025. And resignation of Alicia Daly, RHS Full-Time Instructional Assistant, effective January 8th, 2024, 2025. Do we need to do a motion to, with that amended date on there? Like, what's the official, this is the official document for the file?
No, her letter would be the official.
Okay. Just making sure.
Thank you.
Any questions about the personnel report? Thoughts, comments? Any questions by the public? I'll accept a motion from anyone but Mark. So, did Mark, Stephen move? Thank you, Stephen.
You're wrong.
Motion by Stephen, seconded by Ethan. All in favor.
Straighten arm, finger by raising.
Carries, four zero. Mrs. Vance?
So, we'll begin with our principals' reports. Mr. Snyder, if you'd like to report out since our last meeting?
Sure. Not a lot going on during this time of the year, aside from getting through these e-learning days. We're working hard on that. But before we had our break, we did have our digitarium come in, which is like a blow-up planetarium. And it's really cool, the technology. I know when I was a kid going to those, they were, they were pretty crude and just showed, you know, the stars. These now can take you on trips to Mars and other planets, and they're really advanced and amazing. So, our first grade, part of their cross-curricular lessons and curriculum that they do goes into planets and things like that. So, it all tied in, and it worked really well, and the kids got an opportunity to do that. We're also doing a cross-curricular. We just finished up in kindergarten where the kids are learning about kings and queens and a little bit of the history of that. So, they, we had a king and queen day, and the kindergarten kids got to be kings and queens for a day, princesses and things like that. And they had to, got a chance to have a tea party and kind of experience all that. So, they really did a great job with all of that. Couple upcoming things. We're working on our roundup, which, we don't have the date set yet. We're still trying around with a couple of dates, but we're planning and getting that ready. Our pre-k has got a parent night scheduled for February 12th at 5:00. And that'll be for all the parents that have signed up. We are completely full in our pre-k, minus a couple of spots that we always keep open in case we need to move kids in there, or we have any move-ins come in with IEPs or situations like that. But as far as the main courses, they're all filled up. And so, we'll have those parents in early in February, and they'll have an opportunity to kind of get the paperwork, everything going, so they'll be ready for the fall. And then, pre-k is also doing a games day on the 14th of February, and that's gonna be a pretty exciting thing for them. We've, part of the curriculum for pre-k is actually to play. That's one of the things in On My Way Pre-K that we focus on, and it's something that we work with the kids on how to play and how to, you know, interact with other students and things like that. So, we're gonna do some board games and have a game day with them, where they're gonna get an opportunity to have a lot of fun. So, that's kind of what we've got going on.
Thank you.
Any questions? This is Mark. So, since the last board meeting, we did have our etiquette dinner. It was very successful. We had over 75 adults and community members in attendance. So, huge thank you to all of those that took the time out to come and attend that with our kiddos. It makes a huge difference for them, and we couldn't do it without them. So, thank you to all the adults that came. Successful last PBIS day with another huge thank you to the Times Theater for hosting all of RMS during a snowy morning. And we were a little, just, thank you to transportation for getting us there, only like 15 minutes behind schedule. So, we made the day work. It went well. So, thank you to everybody for that. Since we've returned, gotta give huge kudos to my staff and the students at RMS that came back ready and eager to learn. They have taken their second checkpoint, I-Learn checkpoint, and they're all well above state averages. Some high points, especially in math, being that we've struggled with that in the past. Our math, after just this first, second checkpoint, are 35%, 22% and 17% above the state average. And we still get a second opportunity with each one of those checkpoints to remediate the kiddos that didn't quite make it and retest them, so the numbers will go up from there. So, I'll get to report all that out at our next study session, so I was excited to do that as well. We do have a spelling bee coming up on the 27th at RMS, and checkpoint two, second opportunity, will happen later in February. Any questions? Yes?
Hey, so we were able to have the, all the concerts before break, the jazz band concert, the choir concert, and then we had the six through 12 band, or no, five through 12. You got to see the transition from fifth-grade band, which is exhilarating, through the high school band.
Mark over there.
It was.
The transition was exhilarating.
Yes, it was. It was nice to see the growth as you go. The final exams, we got through those right before break. We did have three young ladies make it down to the state finals. We had a young lady in Lane Peffler who got sixth in the state, and then Lily Gerald got eighth. And our other young lady fought hard but got beat in the first round, Ken McKey. She did a great job. We actually, the week before, hosted the girls' regional. We have a lot of thanks for that, from our staff to our transportation department, our technology department, our community, the mayor, letting us use the city park. We had teachers who did some bussing from the city park and brought our drivers in. I have told some people that I must be getting older, because having the great population we had come for the regional, on top of having schools, a little rough on my heart right now. I mean, it was a stressful day, but it went off without a hitch because of all the help we had and community support we had. And it wasn't just, I guess, the athletic and the community. Our culinary class did the hospitality room. Our construction class built the podium. Our art students painted the podium and did some things to make it look a little cuter than what the AD and I thought maybe it should, but they all did a great job. Then a huge shout-out to Chief Schatz and especially Sheriff Heischman. We did have the five officers in building from Fulton County Sheriff's Department and the city police patrolling our parking lots. So, that was a huge benefit and probably why it went so smooth throughout the day. We have a young man, Grant Bailey, who has actually had two articles published in regards to how to kind of manipulate the stock market, students who are smarter than I, I guess you would say. It's pretty impressive, those articles being published the way they are. Our spring musical was announced. We are doing the Music Man. We have the FFA Greenhand Banquet coming up, January 28th, fast tonight, which is a big night. If you are an outgoing senior, on January 29th, Mrs. Seifer and some college admissions individuals will be there to help you make sure you get that filled out correctly. And then we have sectional and state tournaments for all of our winter sports coming up. The girls' basketball draws this weekend, wrestling sectional's next weekend, and then the boys' sectional will be here before we know it. Swim sectional for girls, I think, is either one or two weekends away in itself, and then the boys are the following week. And then progress reports are coming February 12th. January's over. It's crazy to think that, but that is where we are. Thank you.
Questions? Mrs. Barnes?
So, from the donations we received from the foundation in December, along with the anonymous donations, we were able to clear all negative lunch accounts for all families going into the month of January. So, that was really nice for all of them to have. We will receive $15,000 for our fresh fruits and vegetable program that was locked in last month for the 25-26 school year. We are getting ready to open up the forecasting for commodity dollars, and that has to be completed. It starts in February and runs through March. Our verification system, which I've talked about multiple times, we had 100% response rate, which means all three households that we had to ask for information to verify their applications did respond, and they all stayed at a free or reduced status. So, that gives us a nice door for the fall. We won't have to mess with this again until October of '25, but we'll be, get to be a little more selective with the households instead of ones that they might feel need to be selective first. And then, other than the next few months, I'm going to be having quite a bit of commodity food tasting and things like that to get ready to sign our contract in May for the following school year.
To start off, I'd like to give a big thank you to my staff, my guys that work for me in the maintenance department. They've given a lot. They rearranged our schedule to help snow removal, all the antics and everything that winter brings to us. Right now, we're battling some heat problems and stuff, and we will hopefully get that taken care of tomorrow. But other than that, I really appreciate the board standing behind us and giving us the support that we have. And my staff appreciates it along with myself.
I think we appreciate you being the one out there.
You're more than welcome to come.
You take volunteers?
No. We got a shovel with your name on it.
I'm not sure. Because even our one at home doesn't have my name on it.
I'll take a picture and send it to you.
Okay. Confirmation.
Before we adjourn, if I could, I'd like to give a shout-out to technology and to the teachers as well. Doing e-learning seems like a simple endeavor as you're going through the day, but there is a lot of behind-the-scenes work. The teachers are putting in a lot of time and effort to make sure that those lessons are ready. I know that technology is constantly monitoring that and helping with all of those hiccups that we run into or families run into. So I just want to give a shout-out to the teachers and to Mr. Kissler and his team for all that they do to pull off those e-learning days. They don't just happen. And a thank you to our parents for their support as well.
That's who I was gonna shout out to.
And as we're, as I'm looking out, I forgot Mr. Shane Hall's. An update, I'm sorry. I was kind of behind Kissler and I said, yeah.
Special ed teachers, they wrapped up a couple, yeah, a couple weeks ago, PSYOP training, which is just learning how to reach the kiddos who are bilingual that are in their classrooms. So that is completed district-wide. And the EL world, they have until, I think, mid-February to get almost 40 of the kiddos. We did tested for the federal government, so that'll go on. And then I know that the end of the first semester, Holcomb, Mr. Holcomb was able to send some kiddos back up to the high school. So we always welcome that because they've done exactly what they were supposed to do, or gained credits or improved behavior. So it's a good program that he runs there. Things coming up, the state is changing the IIEP system, which for my staff means more training and change, which I'm sure they love.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all for your reports. I appreciate it. I know that some of you want to get home to the game. There's some kind of game going on. I really thought we could do a round robin, like discussion, brainstorming session tonight. Any other questions or comments, thoughts? Kind of board or public?
I move we adjourn.
Moved by Mark?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ethan. All in favor? If you're not, you can stay. Thank you all.